Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, May 4th, 2017 meeting. I'm gonna handle the prayer and we have a group that wanna welcome, we have Boy Scout Troop 441 from Mars Hill Church of Christ. If you wouldn't mind standing, we have Evan, is it Ellen or Evan?
Ewan.
Ewan, okay. Ewan Andrews, Wyatt Andrews, and they are working on their citizenship in the community and Communication Merit badges. So we'll pray and then a few guys will come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Today, we've gathered all around the country. We were fortunate, we had an opportunity to gather on National Day of Prayer and had over 1,300 people that came to World Outreach today to pray for our community and our country. And we were blessed, so it's a blessing to be able to pray in a free country. So if you will, bow your head. Father, I thank you for this day and this chance that we get together to do your business tonight. I thank you for the opportunity that we get to pray not only for our community, but we get to pray for our country. We get to pray for our servicemen and women, our emergency service providers, and we thank you for the opportunity that we get to do that. We live in a blessed community. We live in a community that although we have things that we need to work on and that we will continue to work on, Murfreesboro and Rutherford County is a phenomenal place to live and we thank you for that. We pray for our president all the way to city council and that we make the decisions that will be fitting in your sight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of ceremonial items. The first, wanna remind everyone actually of two things. This Saturday, starting at 10 o'clock, we have the groundbreaking for the Miracle Field. We're excited about that. That's something that's been a long time coming, so that's gonna be at the front of Sportscom. It's hard to miss, as soon as you turn in, you'll see two baseball fields and be a lot of exciting events. That's gonna go on from 10 to 12, I believe, is our timeframe on that on this Saturday. We also are having our third town hall session will be at Olive Branch Church on Minerva, on the south side of town, and that will be at 3 o'clock this Sunday. So welcome anyone to come out to that. We also have, I think he's, I don't see him sitting out here, Mike Browning is graduating with his third degree from MTSU. So obviously, he's a glutton for punishment, but we're proud of Mike and him getting his degree this weekend. So we've got a lot of people who are gonna be walking this weekend. Pardon?
Jazz Fest.
Oh, and Jazz Fest. So a lot of things are gonna be going on this weekend. And we have this week, Mr. Gore brought this for me to read, but this is an important week, it's Drinking Water Week, something very important, right, Mr. Gore?
Very important.
We're not gonna talk about toilet to tap, right? Okay. "Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health, protection, fire protection, support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy, whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen of our city is called on to help protect our source water from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, I shame it far, the mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim, May 7th through the 13th, as Drinking Water Week, and urge all citizens to join me in a special week as we observe and acknowledge this most valuable natural resources." Cheers. Thank you, Aaron. We appreciate the work that y'all do. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda. You have several items in front of you. Is there anything you're wishing to discuss or remove off the consent agenda?
There's no questions or comments, I move for approval.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We have a letter from Assistant Planning Director regarding a revised Plan of Services Resolution 17R PS07 and annexation petition, Resolution 17RA07.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is just an informational item only. You'll recall when we considered the annexation of the West Park property and the adjacent parcels, you know, we studied large and then we scaled back when we didn't receive the annexation petitions from all the property owners, and so there were three property owners that we did not receive annexation petitions from, and the council made its motion on both the annexation petition and the Plan of Services to reflect the revised study area and a revised Plan of Services that would be forthcoming based upon revised study area. So I'm just up here today to tell you that we have done what we said we were gonna do. We revised the Plan of Services, it's in your agenda packets, it's consistent with the map that we provided you before the meeting, eliminating those three parcels from the study area. No action is needed, this is just for informational purposes only.
Okay. So we'll consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ07.1 to zone approximately 120.5 acres along Burtonon Road and Lyle McDonald Court as Park P District and Highway Commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation 2017-403.
Move.
Second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ08 to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 247.3 acres in the planned residential development PRD District located west of St. Andrews Drive Evergreen Farms PRD 2017-401.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Wright?
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We now consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17O10 amending Murfreesboro City Code to Penix A Zoning Section 2, Section 15, Chart 1, Chart 2, and Chart 1 and Chart 2 End Notes pertaining to revisions to the zoning ordinance. Mr. Tindall?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could propose a couple amendments for council. As part of the definitional additions that we've made, one of the additions was for extended stay motel, which allowed for hotels in industrial zones, but only if they limited the amount of rooms available for extended stay after 30 days to 10% of their total units and 10% over a period of time. We propose, based on the fact that, well, that proposal was based on assumption of 100% occupancy, but the industry standard and the targets for most hotels is about 65% to set 50% occupancy, and so we'd like to propose that that 10% be changed to 5%, so that 5% of the units in a hotel that's in an industrial district would be limited to that number. Additionally, because the ordinance itself contains so many definitional additions that are useful for staff and it replaces the end notes to the ordinance that was dropped out some time ago, that it would be in the best interest of the public welfare if this was declared an emergency and made immediately effective.
Okay. We have two amendments. Would someone like to make a motion to accept those amendments?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll on the amendments.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now consider this ordinance 17O10 as amended.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. First readings, you have a letter from the Assistant Planning Director, first reading ordinance 17OZ07.2. Mr. Baumley?
Thank you once again, Mayor McFarland. Let me pull up the map here. You'll recall back on April 20th, we held a public hearing for the property that Mr. Donna McDonald and Ms. Lassie Crowder own, located along the east side of Veterans Parkway and the west side of Blackman Road, 79 acres. Mr. McDonald requested zoning simultaneous with annexation of 70 and a half acres to be zoned commercial highway and eight and a half acres to be zoned commercial fringe. There was discussion during the public hearing regarding perhaps some uses in commercial highway. Council had some concerns about their appropriateness and just in general, the commercial highway zoning district itself, and also there was discussed about the design guidelines and the timing of the design guidelines. So wanted to give y'all some additional information. First of all, of course, restrictive covenants should not be made a condition of zoning, but as a good faith effort to show what his intentions are, Mr. McDonald has recorded restrictive covenants for this property, and I've handed out each of you a copy for your use and information. In those restrictive covenants, Mr. McDonald restricts the use of the property to not allow any type of adult entertainment and retail outlet, most manufacturing, storage and distribution of various items including automotive components, boats, wood, plastic and metal products, machinery, a truck stop, a trucker motor freight terminal and service facility, major warehousing, used car dealerships, RV campgrounds or trailer parks, wrecker service, storage yard, wrecker service or a towing operation, contractor storage yard, and a bus terminal. A number of those are allowed by Wright in the commercial highway zone. So he has already recorded those restrictions, and I have to applaud Mr. McDonald for quick acting. He got a lawyer to draw those up in about a week's time. With that being said, I have some additional information for you with regards to the other interchanges that are within the city, that are within or adjacent to the city limits to show you that the commercial highway zone is generally consistent with the zoning on the other interchanges that we have in the city limits. Exit 76, the Medical Center Parkway and Fortress Boulevard interchange is zoned commercial highway. Of course, it has the GDO1 overlay. Exit 78, Old Fort Parkway is predominantly zoned commercial highway. Exit 80, New Salem Highway is zoned heavy industrial, light industrial, commercial highway, and RS15, although I will note the one RS15 parcel is on the northeast corner of Warrior and 99, and I would hazard a guess that it probably will not stay zoned RS15. At some point, it's likely to be rezoned when developed. Exit 81, South Church Street is zoned predominantly light industrial and commercial highway. Exit 84, Joby Jackson Parkway is zoned commercial highway, light industrial, and heavy industrial, although note that the west side of this interchange is still in the unincorporated county. Exit 50, Veterans Parkway of I-40 is zoned PUD across Veterans Parkway from the subject property. It's the West Lawn PUD, which is a mixed-use development, and the north side of Veterans Parkway is now predominantly zoned P, although we do have a commercial highway zone for along Veterans Parkway, a commercial highway zoning request along Veterans Parkway north of this interchange as well, that will be going to the Planning Commission later on this month to schedule a public hearing. With regards to the design guidelines, we have, as my memo notes, we've recently completed the Historic Bottoms and North Highland studies, the studies themselves. We will be coming back with recommendations for implementation of those studies, but the studies are complete, and so now we're shifting our attention back to the design guidelines, which had been put on hold temporarily until we completed the Historic Bottoms and North Highland Avenue planning studies. According to a revised schedule from our consultant Reagan Smith, they indicate that during June and July, we anticipate two additional steering committee meetings as well as a public open house to capture public input, and in addition, it is anticipated that a final draft of the design guidelines will be prepared in late July, ready for a Planning Commission public hearing in August. So we're anticipating moving ahead, full steam ahead with the design guidelines. The design guidelines, of course, are citywide documents that would be a citywide document that we anticipate that there would be some regulatory authority coming out of that document that we would amend some of our zoning ordinances to incorporate some of the requirements of the design guidelines that would be citywide. It may not necessarily be to exactly the same standard as the Gateway Design Overlay District, but we'll put in place additional design criteria for landscaping, architecture, open space, and other site plan elements. So we think that will have a very positive impact citywide, including in areas that are zoned commercial highway with no particular overlay district. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. This matter was deferred, now it's back on your agenda for first reading once again.
Okay. So we'll need to consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ07.2 to zone approximately 79 acres along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road. It's Highway Commercial CH District and Commercial Fringe CF District simultaneous with annexation 2017-404.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Mr. McDonald, thank you very much for working with us. We appreciate it. We'll now consider recommendations of the Risk Manager's Staff Attorney regarding the contract for workers' compensation third-party administrator.
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen of the council, the past 15 years have resulted in considerable growth in Murfreesboro, and that has increased the amount of workers' comp claims and the amount of legal services that need to be provided by the legal department. And in the course of that time, there's also been a general trend in the insurance industry from self-insured to professional third-party administrators. This would result, has resulted in fewer insurance companies being interested in our excess workers' compensation program. The staff put their heads together and came up with the best solution to solve all three of these events that have occurred and allow greater time to be devoted by the Risk Manager's Staff Attorney to the legal matters to achieve the position of having a third-party administrator handle the workers' compensation program and would allow the time shift from the rest of the staff of the Office of Risk Management to ease the burden on the legal department. From all of that, the details I believe you all have had in your package and are familiar with those, so it's just simply a matter of our recommendation that the council approve the proposed contract with Ockusure Claim Service and the Johnson Associates and allow Mayor McFarland to sign the contract between those entities for the third-party administration for Murfreesboro's workers' compensation program. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Rucker?
No questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the Transportation Director, Task Order Agreement Number One with Neil Schaefer, Inc., for professional services of the Broad and Memorial Traffic Systems Timing and Operations Project. Mr. Kerr?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As the mayor said, we'll bring before you a recommendation for Task Corps Neil Schaefer for the professional services associated with the Broad and Memorial Project. I believe the previous director had mentioned on numerous occasions that several projects may evolve from the Broad and Memorial Project. St. Clair is one that we're currently working on, this project, and I'm sure that there will be future projects coming about once the interchange is open. To give you a little background, the intersection of Broad Street and Memorial Boulevard is currently located in the core of four signal corridor systems, southeast Broad Street, northwest Broad Street, Old Fort Parkway, and Memorial Boulevard. Due to the high volumes that require extended cycle lengths, the traffic signals at Broad and Memorial currently operate in what's considered a free mode, or it's not coordinated with any other systems due to the long cycle lengths. The traffic signal, as I said, is not coordinated with other systems. Although each of these corridors are state routes, the city is responsible for the operation and maintenance of all traffic signals. Completion of the Bridge of a Broad project creates an opportune time to conduct a comprehensive study and prove corridors between the signal systems along each of these major corridors. I'm gonna turn on an animation and show you the operation of the Broad and Memorial Interchange. Okay. What am I doing wrong here? Well, for some reason, I can't get it on. Oh, there we go. Here we go. Phase one approach, this is prior to the initial opening of the Broad and Memorial Interchange. With a new configuration of the separated great crossing over Broad Street, the operation of the interchange will affect the operations of each system downstream of the intersection, the four systems I mentioned, corridors I'd mentioned earlier. There are several integral components for the most effective operation of the interchange. The focus on phase one of the project will be the core interior of the systems, which include northwest Broad Street from Medical Center Parkway to West Main Street, Memorial Boulevard and Old Fort Parkway from St. Clair Street to New Salem Highway. The study will include the evaluation of existing traffic signal interconnection configurations, signal system configurations, assess, know, and anticipate operational flow changes and implement phasing and timings to maximize traffic operations for post-construction conditions. Additionally, the operation of new signal at Lottle and the roundabout will be evaluated and included in this phase of work. As you know, Lottle Street, once the Broad and Memorial Interchange opened, will have left turns feeding into Lottle and right turns feeding out, so it will open up that corridor. Let me turn this off. Phase two is after the initial opening of the Broad and Memorial Interchange, once the traffic patterns stabilize after the opening of the interchange, the focus of the second phase of the project is to develop a comprehensive update of coordinating traffic signal timings for the corridors impacted by the construction of the Broad and Memorial Interchange. These corridors again include Old Fort Parkway from Veterans Parkway to Broad, southeast and northwest Broad Street from Mercury Boulevard to Thompson Lane, and Memorial Boulevard from Thompson Lane to St. Clair. This encompasses approximately 33 signalized intersections as well as about 13 linear miles of roadway. The scope will include the update of the Synchro software model, evaluating and updating the coordinated traffic signal timings, parameters on-site observation, which is critical, and field fine-tuning to maximize the operation for all three of these subsystems. field fine-tuning to maximize the operation for all three of these subsystems. These modifications will be documented with a before and after travel time study to quantify changes in the traffic operations and measurements of effectiveness of the project. As part of the Broad and, as part of the Memorial Boulevard evaluation, modeling will be conducted that will evaluate the desirability of modifying the cross-section of Memorial Boulevard to provide for three-lane northbound configuration between St. Clair and Clark Boulevard. We're trying to think out of the box a little bit there. The physical impact, the initial funding will be provided from the city's two thousand seventeen general fund. The remaining cost of the project is budgeted for State Street Aid in fiscal year two thousand eighteen. The last extensive study of the corridors was performed in two thousand nine by Neil Schaefer. A few of the benefits that were captured from those studies was less time spent by drivers traveling to and from destinations, improved gas mileage rates, reduction in driver user costs, and reduction in vehicle emissions. I would recommend approval of the Task Corps Agreement with Neil Schaefer and the amount not to exceed one hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred ninety dollars, and I will attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Kerr, why would this not be done in-house? I mean, I know this Synchro software that you're going to probably has some new technology or stuff in it that we may not be familiar with, but I'm assuming if you purchased their software program, there would be some training that would come along with it. Is that incorrect, or is that correct?
Well, we actually have the software. We, we just do not have the capacity to perform this work. It's, it's a lot of work to be done in a short period of time. We don't have the bandwidth.
Would, but we've got the expertise and the knowledge of how to do it. We just don't have the manpower. Is that where we're at?
Yes.
Mr. Balachandran, right now, his workload is substantial. You know, I am expecting to recommend another traffic engineer position in the upcoming year's budget, but as Mr. Kerr mentioned, there is a significant amount of work that's involved in this.
Have we gone down and looked at the intersection of Riley Parkway and Murfreesboro Road in Nashville? It's this, you know, when I talked to Dana Richardson about this quite some time ago, he said it's the same exact intersection, that if you lay it over the top of it, it's almost a mirror image. I mean, wouldn't we be able to just copy what they've got implemented and that should work?
Well, it's changing, this new configuration, it's changing all approaches to, it's feeding all corridors. And what we're looking at with this is actually being able to update all of our system timings throughout O'Fort, Memorial, and Broad Street, which is, like I said, the last actual time that we did that was in two thousand nine. We're doing update for our signal timing plans. And this, this particular project is facilitating that need.
I'll be honest with you, I've had more calls today over this than I have on Shores Road, probably. The, the public just does not understand why we would go outside and, and of course, we study, we study, we study, we study, and, and, and hope for results. And this particular one, I don't know that we can guarantee that anything will be better after it's completed than it is currently. I mean, I know there's a wish that it would be, but with population growth and everything else, I mean, is there, is there any, anything in the contract that says if we don't see any improvement in, in the current time travels?
Well, we, we, we will, you know, they're providing a before and after study, and, and I can tell you that from the previous study, the improvements range from eleven to twenty-five percent reduction in time travel based on specific peak hours. I can't guarantee you that that will occur in this particular project, but, but there will be time savings. If you look at five or ten percent, for instance, over a hundred thousand vehicles per day, that's, that's pretty good savings.
How many vehicles per day is going through Memorial and Broad Street?
Well, right now, ballpark, the latest accounts that we have are two thousand fifteen. Of course, that was during, that's during the construction timeframe. There's about fifty-nine thousand vehicles per day. Prior to that, there was somewhere in the neighborhood, prior to that was about sixty-five, sixty-six thousand per day, right before the project started. It's, it's been as high as seventy thousand in previous years, so it, it is, it's stabilized and out, but it has been growing at about a one percent increase for a while.
It, it seems to be through the intersection daily on multiple times, and, and it seems to be that the timing of the light probably needs a little tweaking, but, but more than that is the fact that we've got several people who are just disregarding the lights, and I think that's a bigger concern that I have is, and I don't know how you fix that problem because if you put blue lights flashing there, it's probably not going to improve the function of the intersection. So, it's kind of durned if you do, durned if you don't situation. But at some point during this construction, would it make sense to possibly just have it as through traffic and eliminate the turn lanes? Because the turning lanes are where all the confusion's coming from right now. When, when I look at, sit and watch the intersection, we've got people traveling up the middle of the road trying to turn left and right off Broad, and they're doing the same thing they've traditionally done, which is wait till the light turns yellow and get into the intersection. The problem with it now is they have to travel so far up the roadway that, I mean, it, it's a very dangerous intersection right now.
Right.
At any point, would we consider taking the intersection and saying it's open to through traffic only so that people just travel straight? And I know that's going to force more traffic off onto Medical Center Parkway and probably Church Street, but it, but it seems to at least accomplish the goal of reducing the number of vehicles that find that intersection desirable to travel through.
Well, like, with the overpass, the O'Fort is going to be a straight pass-through. There, there will be no stopping, right?
But I'm talking about during the construction phase while we're, where we're at right now.
We can consider that? That may be a challenge?
I think one of the things we can do is, is talk to the contractor to ensure we can, if there's more signage, some paint that can help direct the drivers turning left and right. I know, you know, there can be impact, when we have detours, there's impact to businesses in straight-through traffic. That intersection may have some secondary impact on the surrounding businesses that we would want to be mindful of, but I think Mr. Kerr can take some of this feedback and share it with the contractor, see if we can do some more with paint and signage to help them.
It really looks like the problem is, is we've still got too much traffic going through the intersection, and you ask why it's backed up? It's because we've reduced it from three lanes on each side to two lanes on each side, and it just can't, it doesn't have the capacity to handle the vehicles that were going through it. And it's still being used primarily as to a, as just as it was before, and it just doesn't have the capacity to handle it. So, I mean, you know, and, and I still, I, I really struggle with, we just don't have time, because I, I think if we've got the expertise to do it, you know, I, I wish, I wish this conversation had took place well before this meeting here, because the opportunity has been there, and my phone's always open to call me and say, hey, I'm coming forward with this. But, but that didn't happen, so, so here we are, and I, I'm telling you upfront, I will not support this, because I just do not think that any evidence has been presented to me showing that we don't have the manpower to perform it within-house, unless we don't have the expertise. And if we don't have the expertise, that's a completely different problem.
Let me, let me suggest this. Mr. Kerr and Mr. Balachandran will come back with some estimates of the number of hours involved here, and we will bring this back for a future agenda item. Get some more information.
How pressing are we on it right now?
We can, we won't meet next week in a regular council meeting, but we will shoot to have something back to you next week, so you have a week to look at it before we put it on the meeting for the eighteenth.
We're hoping December of seventeen for--
December fifteenth, you will be driving on that bridge.
Going to bet lunch on it?
Might as well. I've been told.
We've already got one--
Want two lunches, I'm in on the bed.
I, I think we're all--
Get to your restaurant.
That's right. I'm fine with coming back, and I, I understand Councilman Smotherman's concerns, but I--
We'll, we'll bring some more information back in two weeks.
Okay.
Move for deferral.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board regarding amending the city of Murfreesboro Stormwater Fund Financial Management Policies. Mr. Gore?
Mayor City Council, thank you for the opportunity tonight. First item on the agenda is looking at a revision to the financial management policy for the Murfreesboro Stormwater Enterprise Fund. I put a graph here for you to review. I think the picture says a thousand words, so to speak, but what you have is the red line is the pro forma, starting with a projected fund balance in FY seventeen and what we see based on our capital improvement projects over a five-year timeframe and operating expenses over a five-year timeframe, what we project that fund balance to be. The green line is what our current financial management policy shows as keeping twelve months operating expenses in a secured fund balance. The blue line is showing what a three-month secured fund balance would be. The reason we're asking for this revision from a twelve-month fund balance to a three-month secured fund balance is simply we project that the capital projects and operating expenses will violate current financial management policies, possibly FY nineteen or FY twenty. It really does depend on how aggressively we spend the money on the capital projects. The good news about this is, is that we are very actively managing the stormwater fund and spending the money in very good projects, which I think about three or four years ago, there was some concern that we weren't spending the money properly and building up too much of a fund balance. So, we looked at this, we felt like the risk on the stormwater fund itself, there isn't any active critical infrastructure that it, that it currently funds as far as chemicals or power. All of the stormwater treatment is pretty much a passive treatment that just requires cleaning up over time and, and obviously the repair and rehabilitation of the storm sewer. So we don't see moving this to a three-month secured minimum as being much of a risk, so staff would recommend the revision. I'm available for questions.
I, I think some in our public comment was six months. Why did we not consider six months?
That's, we, we just decided as a staff to go to three months, but we could definitely take it down to six months. We could leave it at twelve months. The problem with leaving it at twelve months is just we, we have a potential expenditure issue that we may not be able to fund some of the projects we have on the board. And similar, so, so six months would work.
With the six months, somewhere between the green line and the blue line?
Yes, sir. It would be, it would be around, just under a million dollars.
Yeah.
And I think part of our thought process, when we've had our various financial policies about having so many months of reserves for the operating expenses, there are going to be personnel and critical projects and programs, we want to make sure that we have that healthy safety net in case, you know, we have a downturn. But for working capital, you know, the charge we got from the council was the stormwater fee, money needs to get working. Let's build projects, let's make drainage improvements, and we would just slow down the number of projects that we had. We, if we want to get this money, the reason why we were thinking going from twelve months all the way down to three would be to continue to keep that money working, and if we need to slow down a project for a year, we could defer it and not have some exposure that we didn't have a safety net.
Several years ago, when, when the fee was originally initiated, this is oh nine, maybe two thousand ten?
Oh seven is when we actually started the ordinance.
We ended up with a surplus of, I think it got as high as four million or five million dollars?
It was over, it was over five.
Yeah. So, you know, what we did, and this was three years ago, Mr. Huddleston and Mr. Gore came up with a pretty critical list that, you know, we were, we really just said, if you're going to charge the residents and the business owners for this stormwater fee, we need to use it. It doesn't need to be setting up and stockpiling in a, in a fund. So that's where, you know, we did Leaf Avenue, we did Overall Creek, we did Kimbrough Road, you know, we did a driving tour and really saw all those things. So, you know, my opinion is if we've got the three months to be able to cover essential operating costs, that, you know, the likelihood of it getting down to that three months, you could easily see something happening where you stop that before it ever got to that three months. But my goal, in my opinion, on the stormwater fund, from the time that we've had it, is if we're going to collect the fee, it needs to be going to stormwater funds, not just, not funds sitting, you know, stockpiling. So, I'm okay with that, that three months.
And to explain it, maybe in the, you know, looking at it from the opposite direction, if we have the money sitting there in a twelve-month reserve, that means we're not doing drainage projects. The money's sitting in the account, but we're not funding projects. That's why we wanted to bring it down to three months, so we can, you know, continue to make these drainage improvements.
And, and just from my observation, Raymond Hillis has been purchasing pretty, pretty large capital equipment and has been doing a lot of work in-house. And so a lot of projects are being done, and he, he is just raring to go to get, to get things fixed. So he, if, 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 I'm sure if he came forward with a couple of more dozers and a couple of more gradalls or whatever, and asked for some more people, he would do more projects as well. So--
My, my thought has been on the stormwater fund, out of any fund that we have, these are funds that go to people that are having problems that are, you know, either from failing stormwater systems, from older neighborhoods, from developer issues. So it, it really is impact on funds that immediately go to fixing problems that homeowners and residents see, and businesses for that matter, so.
Mr. Hillis repaired someone's driveway the other day because it had been eroded for so many, from the ditch. It was really the right-of-way ditch had come in and tore up his driveway, and they got out there and fixed it within a week. And the homeowner is just thrilled to death, just couldn't be happy, happier. So, it's, it's being put to good use, and I like the momentum that we have now versus the momentum that we did not have a few years ago, and so I would like to stay aggressive and kind of keep, to keep the pedal down, and let's keep doing good work.
The last thing I will throw in, in oh seven, can't let this go by, this was an unfunded mandate that was sent down to us by the federal government that we did not have an option to not do this. So we were told to do it and figure a way to pay for it. So, you know, when, when residents will call about the stormwater fee, we, we didn't have an option. I mean, we, we, we had to do it.
And, and another, not to keep going on, but Metro Nashville just doubled their stormwater fee because of the problems that they've been having. So, we're not looking at doing that this year, which is, we've stayed flat from oh seven.
You okay with three months?
You know, I guess, if, if it doesn't keep any project from, from, if six months is not going to keep any project from going forward, and three months, if that, this doesn't inhibit, you know, this, I don't know, you know more about this as far as what's the projects that are on the table. It seems like to me we're just leaving a bank a little, little lower, and I'm a little concerned about that, to have, you know, if some major project hits us, then we're going to find other, we're going to find the money to do it.
Well, and that was the thought--
I know that, but--
That was the thought process as well, is that prior to the stormwater fee, all of these activities were being funded by the general fund--
General Fund.
--and Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. So there's, 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 there's safety nets here. This isn't like we're pulling, pulling the safety net out from under it and there won't be backup if, in case there's an emergency. This is just giving us a little more free board on the, on the reserves to work the stormwater fund.
So, if you're okay with that, thank you, Mr. Gore. I make the motion to approve. Second.
Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on first reading ordinance seventeen oh fifteen, amending Chapter thirty-three, Water and Sewer, Section thirty-three-one of the Murfreesboro City Code, dealing with the minimum monthly water charges and minimum monthly sewer charges.
Mayor Council, thank you again. I do have a PowerPoint here that I would like to go through just to kind of give you, and it's again, a reminder, repeat, reinforce on how we come about and get our rate design The, well, let's use this. We have done a cost of service study since 2007. What you see in the orange is actually our rate revenue requirements to fund, to deliver our cost of service for water and sewer combined. You can see in '07, '11, we were under-recovered. We did not collect the proper revenue to fund cost of service. '13 and '15, we have, that's the green bar, so we did over-recover on rate revenue. What that's used for, and this is kind of the, they're superimposed, we actually have a FY '20 pro forma. So, it shows you where we've over-recovered for FY '15, and that we have a revenue gap that we anticipate to get to FY '20. And this really is, when you, those two numbers, that over-recovery and that revenue gap is really the basis for our, we try to put together a five-year rate design, so that that stair-stepped, a stair-stepped approach versus all of a sudden getting, having to have knee-jerk reactionary rate increases. You can see that's, what's kind of in bold is our current FY '18 projected revenue. We've got revenue from growth, we've got revenue from our AMI project, we've got a little bit of sewer commodity revenue lost. The number to really focus in on is kind of that $438,000. That is a revenue that's going to be generated from a reduction in our minimum allowance of large meters, meters that are one inch and larger. You can see, this is how it's derived, this is, we have 1,533 meters that are one inch and larger. We go from a current, you can see the current allowance, 60 cubic feet up to 4,950 cubic feet. We've actually been doing this over a five-year period. We've, we're in year five of five. We have reduced the minimum allowance, so we don't change the rates, but we just reduce the minimum allowance, which captures that delta, and you can see what the added revenue is. So, this is actually year five of five that we are going down to zero allowance for meters one inch and larger, and that's where we anticipate that $438,000. With regards to residential, 5/8 inch meters, no change. We're not looking at a change in the minimum bill, we're not looking at a change in the commodity cost. You can see over in that far right for FY '18, zero and zero for water and sewer. And we're pretty proud of the fact that back in FY '14, we thought we were going to have to have a $12.44. That was our rate designed to cover that $12.44 per resident was our projected five-year increase. We ultimately just handled that with a $4 increase. This affordability, the purple dots represent 4% of a very low-income earner in Murfreesboro. That is 50% of the average median income per the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The, the solid line, you can see the 5,200 gallons and 4,800 gallons, that's the average use for a homeowner in Murfreesboro. It's about two and a half people per home. So, you can see, the good news is that solid line is underneath those purple dots. So, we are underneath the affordability index that our, that our industry kind of looks for us to try to maintain, maintaining water and sewer bills under that 4%. One of the, an interesting development that's occurred, I don't know if you've been out to General Mills and Indian Hills lately, but they did construct about a two, two and a half million-dollar irrigation system. The idea being that General Mills would be pumping some highly-treated effluent processed water over to the Indian Hills Golf Course for irrigation. This is a great socio-economic win for the city. I mean, you've got a golf course that needs the water, and you've got an industry that needs to get rid of the water. The, kind of the downside is, is that we lose revenue on this kind of situation. They're not going to be sending it to our sewer any longer, it's going to be used on land application. The good news for us, for the Water and Sewer Department, is the fact that we, we free up capacity. We do, we gain a lot of capacity by not taking on that, that deal, or the effluent from General Mills. This is what we expect, a loss in revenue of about 1.1 million per year, if they do, or if they are capable of putting 550,000 gallons per day out on the golf course. This is, just remains to be seen if they'll be able to accomplish that. I know we're driving by it every morning, they are throwing a lot of water on that golf course. I don't know if you've been by there, but it looks like a, you know, Disney World water feature. What that does to our five-year pro forma, you can see over on that right-hand side, that's, now we're projecting about a 1.2 million deficit in sewer commodity lost. That brings our five-year total to about 860,000. That does not cover, obviously, the 3.18 million that we see as a gap. But, we're going to keep an eye on this. We're scheduled to do an FY '17 cost of service study this year. We'll have an FY '22 pro forma done. So, I don't think, our growth is keeping us in good position, so I think we can afford this revenue loss, but we'll find out through our cost of service study. But our recommendation tonight is to approve the FY '18 water and sewer rate ordinance, and I'm available for questions.
Darren, I got just one question. It's a pretty simple question, I think.
Yes, sir.
When we get a lot of rain like we've had the last few days and, or weeks, it, does this, if, if the golf course doesn't need the water, and at some point, you've got too much water on grass?
Right.
It, does that mean that General Mills kicks back in and does put it back into our system?
Yes, sir.
So, so there is a cap that they can shut off and say?
Yes, sir. And, and my understanding, because we, we didn't necessarily broker that, we were in on the, we were in on the, they wanted, Indian Hills and General Mills really wanted our, our involvement in kind of brokering this deal. And my understanding is that they're looking at that's the eighth of an inch per day of rain per year. Obviously, there are days you're not going to be able to put an eighth of an inch of water on the irrigation, but I think they're looking at that seasonal demand. They think they can get more in the summer and less in the wet season. So, they, they felt comfortable. I think it may be a little aggressive, but hey, they're the ones that floated the note, and they've got to cover it, so, but they can't, yeah, their, their permit disallows them from applying this water and then it channelizing and getting in the river.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you hit too much effluent on the, it's going to hit the ditches, and it's going to run right back down to the river at some point, so.
The state would not be pleased with that situation.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions?
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Will now consider recommendations of Assistant City Manager, Change Order Number Two to Contract with Energy Systems Group.
Mayor and Council, city schools have asked that our contract with ESG be the vehicle for them to replace the heating and cooling system at Irma Siegel Elementary during the summer. They don't have an active contract with ESG at the moment. They would desire to go ahead and replace that chiller and heating unit at Irma Siegel. So, they're asking us to amend our contract for $356,610. City schools would pay 100% of that cost. We currently have county shared bond proceeds in hand to cover that. Be glad to answer any questions, but we're really just the conduit to get timely delivery of a heating and cooling system for summer installation.
Interest on that was what, .0, .75%?
Well, that's Melissa's item coming later, which is the larger energy savings program they entered into. This was an afterthought to their first phase that's in that .75 interest rate. These funds are the dollars that the county must share with city schools when they go out and build elementary school facilities. So, these dollars are paid by our taxpayers and the county taxpayers, but don't have an interest rate charged to the city schools.
The one you're referring to, the funds haven't been spent completely on energy projects, and it is done.
I move we approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Will consider recommendations of City Manager, Medical Center Parkway and Gateway Boulevard Intersection Improvements.
Mayor, members of City Council, I've got an agreement with you with St. Thomas Hospital regarding intersection improvements at Medical Center Parkway and Gateway Boulevard. In 2008, when the Planning Commission approved plans for what was then known as Middle Tennessee Medical Center, the hospital was required to construct a right-turn lane and signalize that intersection. Subsequent to that, the city and the hospital negotiated a deferral of those intersection improvements until Medical Office Building Number Three could be constructed. That Medical Office Building has yet to be constructed, and I've had a series of conversations with their president, Gordon Ferguson, about the need to bring that signal forward since it currently does meet warrants. We've looked at an engineering design, looked at several options, given the space that's available in the intersection. We have selected option number two, that would help us avoid relocating a number of utilities that are underground. Option two would require the removal of part of the median and the landscaping, construction of left-turn lanes, right-turn lanes, an installation of the traffic signal. We would do this work with our existing contract with Rollins. The estimated cost is about $500,000. I would point out the mast arm poles would need to be bid. When we met with Mr. Ferguson, we did talk about the fact that that intersection carries traffic for more than just the hospital. We also know that Mr. Ferguson's got plans for, you know, additional expansions on their campus. And so, what the agreement that's before you says is that the hospital would continue to be responsible for the approximate half-million-dollar cost of that intersection. However, should the hospital construct additional square footage on campus over the next 10 years, the city would be willing to rebate them or reimburse them half the cost of that intersection for the increment in tax, taxes from property tax. So, the short story is, they would fully reimburse the city for the half-million-dollar expense to construct the intersection. Hopefully, they will expand, they'll build more on campus. That would be good for the city, good for the residents who get service there, and also provide some additional capital back to the hospital, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sounds like a good plan. If there's no questions or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Tyndall, I want to ask, just out of an abundance of caution, I have a project that I'm working on in this corner. I have no, have not been involved in these negotiations, have not, but am I okay to proceed to vote on this?
You have a, that you're building just on general land, not?
Right on this.
I think you're, yeah, I think you'd be, you'd be fine. This is just intersection improvements, it's going to happen one way or the other.
I can attest, this is a horrible intersection. As a matter of fact, came up on a wreck on this intersection, and Mr. Joe Gurley, the commissioner, I was the first one on the intersection and helped pull a lady out of her car, and it's, it's, this is a very, very dangerous intersection, so.
Ms. Wright, you call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Will now move to Board and Commission Appointments. You have a correction to the appointment on April 20th to be placed in the general category and move current member Steve Benefield to the management of 20 more employees to fill the vacancy left by Mr. Peter Demus, and this was Mr. Michael Osborne's appointment.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Wright, you call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Will also want to recommend reappointing Mr. Stephen Dix and Zach Lester, who have served on this committee capably, and both would like to be reappointed.
No move.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, you call the roll.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have one beer permit with a lot of events.
Yes, sir. We have a special event application from Oakland's Association. They have listed eight events they plan to have throughout the end of this calendar year, which is allowed under our application process. The application is in order, and we recommend approval.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We have one statement that needs to be paid.
Move to pay the bills.
Second. Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Under other business, we have three different items. We have an agreement with MTSU to be able to make our effluent water tower true blue.
True blue.
Yes, sir. I'll bring up an exhibit here. This was done by, I believe, someone in the Arts Graphics Department at MTSU, but this is kind of their rendering of what they, what they envisioned. Minus the silver base coat, it was, it just, it's a white base coat right now, and that's what it would, I think it was a little too expensive to paint the silver base coat. But with the help of our legal department, primarily through our legal department, they crafted a water tower use agreement with MTSU. I think this was something that has been desired by Middle Tennessee State University for some years. It is now at the point where I believe all parties are in agreement to move forward. MTSU has some funding. The agreement effectively puts the cost on the initial cost, the design, the paint cost, and the maintenance cost for these logos on the university, so there should be a net zero effect to the city. So, we would recommend your approval for the water tower use agreement with Middle Tennessee State University.
So, move.
For the record, I, I'm going to vote on this because I don't think there's any conflict of interest, but I do want it to be noted on the record that I work for MTSU, and there's no financial gain or anything for me whether or not we do the logo, so I will vote.
Second. Motion second.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank staff and thank MTSU for working on this. This is something we've been working on for several months, and when we met with Mr. Ottman and then Mr. Bells, it just so happened that many, many years ago, there was a donation that was made to the foundation that was for special advertising, I think is how it was labeled, and so, someone made a donation many, many years ago that's going to end up paying for this, so. And, you know, I will say selfishly, it's, it's ironic, my kids played in a basketball tournament at Western Kentucky University this past weekend, and Western has this same water tower, and there's not anything that Western Kentucky's better at than MTSU, so we're excited to be able to, to handle that. All right, we have future appointments to the Evergreen Cemetery Board. No action tonight, but if you'll, if you'll look at that. And we also are looking at, and legal department is looking at, the existing board on Evergreen is 31, 34 members, and Evergreen has requested that we work that down to 27. So, that'll be coming in front of you as, as well.
Ms. Wright, you have State Form CT 0253.
Yes, Mayor, this form is required to be presented at a public meeting before I can turn it into the state, and this is simply summarizing the energy loan that we've got for the city schools, which initially, they came to you in December of 2015. The project has been completed, the funds have been reimbursed, and they started making their payments to reimburse the state this month. So, I just want to bring this here, will be in the minutes, to acknowledge that the form has been presented. No vote is required.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Any other business to come before the staff, or from staff or City Council? All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.